It's today, the 19th?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening. If I could call the June 19th Eastchester Board of Education meeting to order and ask everyone to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I don't know if we have any high school reports? Do you guys have reports?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. To start off, the 15th Annual Film Festival took place on May 25th, and over the course of three hours, there's an exciting array of films and music festivals, with many awards which include Best Story, which went to Bitcoin by Jet Orlando. Fortunately, I had to leave the festival during intermission, but I enjoyed it a lot. Also, over the past two weeks, underclassmen have been taking finals. Most tests have taken place in the gym, but I know today. Exam schedules in the gym were moved to air-conditioned rooms due to the heat, which is very nice. And the last exam for students will take place tomorrow, and it's the Chemistry Regents. Makeup Day for finals will be Thursday, the 22nd. Finally, this year's school-wide summer reading book is The Alchemist by Apollo Coelho. I'd also like to congratulate Adam, who'll be graduating this Friday, and make him for being a very good partner and friend. Best of luck next year at Georgetown, and I hope everyone on the board has a great summer as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. Good evening, everyone. On June 4th, there was the Eastchester High School Sports Awards Dinner. The Male Athlete of the Year was Christian Aliberty, and the Female Athlete of the Year was Breed O'Connell. On June 14th and 15th, the senior class had the opportunity to present in the high school gym their wise presentations. We made poster boards, and we were able to have people walk around, ask us questions. It was open to the public, and it was a great experience. Lastly, grades come out next Friday, and I just want to thank you all. Have a great summer as well.
Thank you, and good luck.
Thanks, Adam.
All right. And now, any board committee reports? You can talk about it.
Facilities walked the high school building today, and it's really progressing well. We're making it by September 1st, I believe, or 5th.
The fall.
It looked very good. It's good to see. See taking.
It'll be close.
Yeah.
All right. Anybody else? In that case, I'm going to turn it over to the superintendent.
Okay. Well, tonight, we have a number of recognitions. Typically, at our last official meeting of the year, of the school year, we recognize all of our volunteers, but tonight, we have some additional awards and recognitions to make, and to begin that, I will call Scott Winn to the podium, because he has an extraordinarily special one.
Good evening, everyone. So, back in the fall, the district decided that it was time to look at our district logo and our district slogan, and to possibly update it, and we have successfully done that, but we have a very special recognition, because part of the process, this was a collaborative process, and we reached out to all of our students and ran a competition to see if one of the students could design and come up with the new district logo or the district slogan. And tonight, I am proud to present our new Eastchester School District logo and slogan, and I'm very proud to call up now Caitlin Cops. Caitlin is the student that came up with our new district slogan, Soaring to Excellence. So, we want to congratulate her. We want to present you with this certificate, which congratulates you for coming up with the slogan, and I'm proud to say, you are getting the first official piece of paper that has the new slogan and logo on it. So, that is for you. Congratulations, and great job. You're welcome.
So, now, I have the distinction of recognizing two outstanding scholars in the class of 2018, and I'm going to begin by asking Joanna Giorgio to please join me up here at the podium. Joanna is the salutatorian of the class of 2018. We had dinner last month over at the Lower Hudson Council Superintendents, all the valedictorians and salutatorians across the four county region, and it's an extraordinary accomplishment. I just want to tell you a little bit about Joanna. She's held many different leadership positions during her time at the high school, and is described by her principal as a person who leads quietly but very, very powerfully. Served as EGO Executive Vice President, Executive Treasurer, Class Vice President, also Captain of Relay for Life, and your team raised over $8,000, and individually, I believe, you raised $4,000 of that, which is really quite remarkable. Joanna was the team captain of the Athena's Owls, which won second place in the 2016 Regional Kalenek History Tournament, also Academic Challenge Team Vice President and French Club Treasurer, and captain of the EHS Swim Team. In addition to all of that, Joanna has a black belt in mixed martial arts. I don't know where she finds the time, but she did that as well. Is also a violinist for the Westchester County Greek Youth Orchestra, and is, of course, fluent in Greek. She volunteers at Gilda's Club, Relay for Life, does monthly church runs, and Rock Against Cancer, and those accomplishments have led to a wonderful opportunity that you have, to be attending Princeton University in the fall. So, Joanna, we congratulate you. We'll be hearing from Joanna on Friday of graduation, so we're excited about that. Adam Ginsburg. Come on up, Adam. Adam is the valedictorian of the class of 2018. Adam, of course, we know for the past couple of years here on television and at our meetings, has been the student representative to the Board of Education. He's also been the captain of the soccer and tennis teams, and president of the Science Honor Society. This tremendously unassuming and humble young man has his own podcast called Third World Airports. I think I've been to some of those. I know I've been to some of them. He enjoys giving of his time by playing piano for nursing home residents. He's a politically-minded individual, and has done internships with Congressman Elliot Angle's office. Adam is one of the most tenacious but kindest competitors that his principal has ever witnessed, and we are so proud of what you've accomplished here at school. And Adam will be attending Georgetown University in the fall. So, congratulations, Adam. I'm very happy, also at this time, to call up to the podium for recognition, the president of our school board this year, Mr. Rob Summer. I want to thank Rob for his leadership of the board, for his very dedicated service to the community and to the district, and we have a special plaque with a gavel as a very small token of our appreciation. Rob, thank you so much. To serve on the board for three years is really hard work. Six years, nine years, 12 years, 15 years, 18 years, 21 years. Michelle Kissel, exemplary, extraordinary service to the Eastchester Board of Education starting in 1997 and culminating at the conclusion of this term. Michelle, we want to congratulate you. Please come up. We have a very small token of our appreciation for you.
Thank you.
And before you read what's on that paper, I have someone here that wants to also say a few words, so I'm going to call your husband, Rich.
Oh, God, that was bad.
I was going to end it on barrage. That's what I did.
So...
Are you clean now?
So, my name is Rich Kissel. I've loaned this district my wife for 21 years. She's done great service for the school, and I want to honor the entire school board and Dr. Moran. You guys do a great job. I have to say, I'm kind of sad about this, mostly because now, I don't have free Tuesday nights anymore. It's really difficult to be married to somebody that the whole town calls the voice of reason. I never win an argument. Vito, you can attest to that, right? And it's really just, I'm inspired by anybody who dedicates time for our children or for any good cause, really. And here's my wife, who, we haven't had a school, a kid in the school district since 2009, when my son Bobby graduated this high school, and she's been coming here Tuesday nights and trying to do what she can to benefit the kids, to make the school better, and I think about what things were like 21 years ago. Vince Forte's not here, is he? Mr. Moses certainly is long gone, and a lot of people who've come through here, and my wife has been a consistent voice. I'm really proud of her. As I said, I'm inspired by her, and I think the school district will miss her, but she'll always be the voice of reason, and I just want everyone to really celebrate her great dedication to public education. Thanks.
My speech will be better than his, so...
One more thing before you start. You're not going to have Sunday rolling her eyes at you anymore.
I just told her that before.
But I'll come in the waddies and give him my...
We already arranged, it's going to be by email.
So, I appreciate everybody indulging me just for a minute or two, because I just wanted to take a minute to thank everybody and say goodbye. As Rich said, I decided to run for the board in 1997, 21 years ago, so if you think about it, the kids who were graduating on Friday from high school weren't even born yet when I decided to run. And I ran because I was such, I was a big supporter of public education, and I wanted to give back to the community. I had three children in the district at that time, a six-year-old, a 10-year-old, and a 14-year-old, and I was a lawyer, and I was an educator in higher education, and I thought I had something to be able to give back to the community. And it's been an incredible and rewarding ride for 21 years, and I just thought I'd mention a couple of the highlights, because I think sometimes we take things for granted, and we don't realize how much has been accomplished. Our enrollment of kids in the schools has increased by more than 1,000 students from the time I started to now. We, over that period of time, we had eight bond votes. Only five of them passed, and I was president when one of them didn't pass, but, and we added additions to Waverly, because Waverly was just a kindergarten school. We made it K-1. We added the addition to the middle school. We added an addition to the high school. That's going to be a beautiful, incredible building. I've had the honor to work with five different superintendents, and I was part of hiring four of them, and we did, when I began on this board, we had no special education courses, classes in this district. All of our special education kids were sent out. We brought them all back. We had very few AP courses. We added AP courses. We added courses in computer technology. We added sports teams. We had no lacrosse team. We had no swimming team. We made sure that the girls' team uniforms at that time were the old boys' team uniforms, so we made sure that the girls had real uniforms. We added differentiated instruction, raised standards for student instruction, and I think everybody has seen what an incredible job that's happened in this district. And, you know, we supported our students and their families through all kinds of tragedies, through 9/11, which, of course, impacted many families right here in Eastchester, and, of course, all the recent tragedies we've had with the shootings in the schools. But everything that we've done has been a team effort, a real team effort. I've had the privilege of working with wonderful board members. I tried to figure out how many over the 21 years, and it's not as many as you think, because so many of us have continued and have given so many years to this district. And we don't always agree. Sometimes I think it seems like we are so agreeable, but the truth is that we have many spats and many disagreements among us, but we're always trying to do what's best for all of the children of Eastchester. And I don't think, you know, if you talk to people in other districts who have been on, involved with other school boards, I don't think that you realize what an incredible group of people we have had on this Board of Education, that that really has been the goal of everybody on this board, is to look out, not for their children, not for a certain group of constituency, but for all of the children of Eastchester. It's all, in addition to the board, of course, the central office staff is just an incredibly wonderful group of people. Again, I've worked with, there've been changes and shifts over the 21 years, but each one is so dedicated and so understanding of kids' needs and putting kids first, and, of course, the teachers, the teachers, and all the unions have been just a pleasure to work with. Again, you don't see that in other districts, and that's been a wonderful thing, too. My kids, you know, still, they invited teachers to their weddings, and they still talk about the custodians who let them into the buildings after it was locked to get the notebook that they forgot, or the TAs who helped them tie their shoes, and things like that. So, it's just an incredible group of teachers, of teacher assistants, of monitors, of the support staff, the nurses in the schools, the custodians, and, of course, the whole community, and, you know, I know there are people here tonight from the beautification committee, which I think is great, because everybody is looking out to make sure that our district looks and reflects who we are. The parents, and, of course, the kids of Eastchester, which, you know, it's just, it's just such, we talk about this being a special community. It's a different kind of community. It's like a small town in a county, and it's such a great group of kids, and I'm lucky enough, I've been here long enough that I've seen some of the kids who grew up with my own kids come back and be teachers in this school district. So, what more, you know, could you ask for? It's no wonder that, I've lived here like 30 years, and I'm one, I'm still a newcomer to Eastchester. People just come here, and families come back, and come back, and come back. The wonderful thing about public education, of course, is, you know, it really is about local control. I mean, that's the reason you have a school district, that it's really the Eastchester community who is forming the way that they want their school district to be. And our school, I think, reflects our community, but I also think that we have to be very cognizant that all the gains that we've had in all of the years, as we can, as we see, unfortunately, can easily be lost if we're not vigilant and we don't pay attention, and we don't make sure that we respect everybody, and that we respect diversity, and that we really take care of each other and watch out for each other. So, again, I know that I leave you in excellent hands. I'll be sure to come and stand up there and complain when I think things aren't going correctly, or Vito is asking too many questions. But thank you all. It really has been an honor and a pleasure to serve you all for this time, so thank you.
So, as Michelle said, the success of our district is so connected to our community, and this evening, we would like to also recognize all of our volunteer organizations, who are such an important part of the work that we do. And I don't know that each group is represented tonight. If you are, and I call your group up, please join me here to say a couple of words, but first of all, I'd like to recognize our Alumni Association and Maura McMahon. Maura, I believe you're here. If you want to come on up, and we want to thank you for your work with the alumni.
Thank you, Dr. Moran. Susan Cutson is here with me as well. We are both on the Alumni Association. We are kind of the alumnus. We are parents of alumni, but we are not alumni of Eastchester schools ourselves. But as, you know, Michelle just spoke, we strongly, strongly believed in the Eastchester schools. We've advocated for them since our children were in kindergarten, which I believe, Michelle, was when Emily started kindergarten back in the day. And we felt strongly that there should be an Alumni Association, so we got together with Dr. Capuano and started one. This year, we held our second Hall of Fame for this group, and it was a marvelous night. We recognized a number of old and young alumni, and if you haven't had a chance to go to the website or the Facebook page and take a look, I would suggest that you do so. Other than that, we look forward to welcoming the class of 2018 at the end of the week. We will be at your rehearsal on Thursday, and giving you a small token of our appreciation and welcome. So, thank you.
We'd also like to recognize tonight, the Eastchester Sports Club, President Dan Schultz. I'm not sure if Dan is here tonight. Is there anyone from the sports club who would like to come up and say a word? We want to thank the club for their very generous scholarships and all of the work that they do in our district to support our very strong and vibrant athletic programs. The Sports Award Dinner, just a couple of weeks ago, as was mentioned before, was just outstanding, so thank you very much for their work in our district. The Music Boosters Association. Do we have Diane Lama here tonight? We don't. Well, I want to thank the Music Boosters. You know, all of the programs that are thriving in our district, one that is truly moving ahead in great leaps and bounds is our music program, and the Music Boosters have been instrumental in advocating for the TRIAM Society, which is a National Honor Society for music, and the level of participation in music is climbing and climbing every year. The level of play has increased remarkably, so we want to thank the Music Boosters for their support of our music program in our schools, and Diane, and all who work closely with her. I do see George Winn here, so George, come on up. We'd like to recognize the Eastchester School Foundation.
First of all, just, Michelle, your service is breathtaking. It started before I was even married, so, and what I think of what you've left as a legacy for my children is mind-blowing. And my own oldest came back to us in October after having just gotten to school and said, "They prepared me." So, thank you. Thank you. I'll be quick. The foundation is looking to actually have about 40,000 in grants coming this year, and that's just on our own. We typically partner with Music Boosters and SEPTA and the different PTAs, so we're tying it up. And I'd like to tell you that we've welcomed several new board members this year. Beverly Fang has joined us, Jimmy Martin has joined us, Jerry Napolitano, and Patricia Riley. And so, we're grateful for their stepping up for service, and we're also really grateful for the continued service of Natalie Di Taggiani, a name that I know, you will know, from one of the founders. She continues to be our secretary. Mary Ann Bateman Clemente will continue on as our vice president, and I know her youngest is graduating, but she's still in with us. We also have Judah Holstein. Thank you very much, Judah. And we also have Vito, both, you know, Vito as a liaison from the board, Judah as well as actually a board member. And Angelo Liberatore, Georgina Marley, and Chaki Umemoto, and then Hiroshi Abe, who stays on as our treasurer. So, please look to our website in the next few weeks, probably after the 1st of July or so, when we're all back, and we'll have an update on grants. Thank you.
He tried to steal my notes last year, too, but I caught him this time. We have our PTA council. Teresa Hrivnek. Is Teresa here? Teresa is not here. Eleanor Evangelista? Well, again, I want to thank the PTA council. We meet monthly with them, the president of the board this year, Rob Summer and I, Mary Ellen Byrne, and a number of our different constituent groups, and all the PTAs, our ETA leadership, and the PTA council works so very hard on behalf of our district, and we want to thank them for that work. Also, tonight, we would like to recognize SEPTA. The co-presidents are Eleanor Evangelista and Sharon. Sharon? Is Sharon here tonight? She's not. So, SEPTA, what can we say about SEPTA, Nori? They're incredible, right? They're enormously supportive, and I think that, as Michelle said before, the decision to bring back the students to Eastchester some 20 years ago, and the gains that we have made in that area have led to, I think, what is one of the premier programs in this region, if not in New York State. We can be very proud of the fact that most, all of our students are here in Eastchester, and whatever their needs are, we have programs for them, and they're an inspiration for us, and SEPTA is a great organization who supports that work and is very, very generous to our students, our teachers, and the district, so we thank SEPTA very, very much. Greenville PTA sent me their accomplishments for the year, but I do want to recognize the co-president, Lorraine Savariz. And Lorraine is not here, correct? So, here's what Lorraine asked me to say tonight. She said that they had a wonderful year at Greenville. Many of the events that began previously continue to be enjoyed by families, including the Welcome Back Movie Night and the Sweetheart Dance, but the newest event this year was the Greenville Talent Show, which was a tremendous success. There were over 55 acts of talented students who were showcasing their singing, dancing, musical, and various talents, which was quite the event, and so, the PTA is looking forward to carrying this event into the next school year and celebrating the very wonderful students at their school. I would also like to recognize the co-presidents of the middle school PTA, Gina Scaglione and Renee Howell. Might either be here tonight. Please come on up.
So, at the beginning of the year, we got some feedback from our administration that they were a little concerned about the relationship between the PTA and how we supported the school, so we've taken that to heart and worked very hard this year with the administration to bring a couple new events to the school. We worked and had a joint meeting showing a documentary called Screenagers, which was about the effects of, you know, screens, phones, computers, and on our teenagers. We also worked with the staff to incorporate more parent participation in Career Day, and we held two book fairs this year, one with a book club that was held by Dr. Moran, which was well-attended. So, we hope that we have convinced them that we are good partners, and I have to say that both Josh Elder and Madeline Laboue, I have never had to say this, they have always responded to every call and every email, and we really appreciate that, so just wanted to let you know that. And one big accomplishment for the PTA this year was we were one of two PTAs in New York and one of 25 PTAs in the country that were awarded a STEM grant from Microsoft and the National PTA, and we were able to actually build robotic hands with the students, and that was a lot of fun and brought out a part of the community that we had not seen before. So, it was very successful, and thanks for all the support from the administration.
And, of course, that event that we spoke about, the book club, was held at Barnes and Noble back in the fall. It was a great event, but I don't think it quite drew as many people as they're drawing tonight with Bill Clinton and James Patterson, but it was close. It was a close second for that. Thank you to the PTA. Anne Hutchinson, co-presidents Leah Fogliano, Renee Di Benedetto, are either here tonight? They're probably celebrating the moving up ceremony that occurred at Anne Hutch this afternoon at 4:30, at which Leah received a wonderful recognition from the class, the fifth grade class, and her daughter, who's in that class. So, we want to thank the Anne Hutch PTA for their work at the school, a school that's really moving forward with Dr. Keane and doing some amazing things with social-emotional learning, with student leadership, and we're excited about that work continuing. We have our high school co-presidents, Diane Filiberty and Beth Johnson. If you would come up.
Thank you very much. I'm Beth Johnson. This is Diane Filiberty, and we're the high school co-presidents. We've had a great year at the high school, but before I go over those things, I'd really like to thank Michelle for her years of service. You've been a tremendous asset to the community, to the board, and you've always been, as your husband said, a voice of reason, so we're sorry to see you go, but thank you for everything you've done. We'd also like to thank Steve for his service on the board. We're sorry to see you go, but thank you for everything that you did and the time that you served.
And we hope you'll be back.
And we hope you'll be back. Exactly. We'd also... We'd also like to recognize Mary Ellen Byrne. I know she's not here tonight, but honestly, without Mary Ellen, a lot of what we do on the PTA level would not be communicated to parents through the district, and she's just been a tremendous asset to us. I'll personally miss her, and I know the board of the PTA will miss her as well. So, but well-deserved retirement on her part, so I hope she enjoys it. So, as far as the high school PTA this year, our big event is the fashion show, which, I have to be honest, I'm new to the high school PTA, my first time attending it, and it was awesome. It was a really, really great event. The kids had a great time. It's so well-done, and it's all done by volunteers. I mean, the parents who organize this event are truly, truly fabulous and amazing, and I'm sure you could speak to it. It was, you know, it's just a wonderful event, and that's where we raise most of our money for the high school. We use that money for senior events, senior breakfasts and all kinds of things, as well as teacher mini-grants. We do offer mini-grants to teachers to help them get materials and services they might need for the students at the high school level. Those are kind of the two big things. But anyway, we'd like to thank the board, Dr. Moran, the parents, and the students for all their support all this year, and we look forward to a great year next year as well. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And our Waverly School co-presidents of the PTA, Ally Coco and Jennifer Pagliarulo. Might either of them be here tonight? They are not. I want to commend the Waverly PTA, as Dave Carforo knows, who's been the board liaison for many, many years. All of the PTA funds go toward cultural enrichment for the students, and they have a very rich program, and it's a wonderful, wonderful thing to see, the level of involvement of the parents and the gains that we're making at Waverly. Waverly had their Moving Up Concerts yesterday, which was really quite precious, and we want to thank them very, very much for their work in our schools. And as was mentioned before, Mary Ellen Byrne, who is our public relations director, is retiring. She was honored last night at the ETA Retirement Dinner. Mary Ellen has been in our district for fourteen years. She's worked for three superintendents, written hundreds and hundreds of press releases and newsletters. She edits all of my work, which is no small task, but she does so, so much for the community, as all of you know, working closely with you and with the board and with our team. And we wish her the best in retirement. She's off to the Berkshires to enjoy the clean air and the quiet time, and she won't be getting those early morning weather calls from me at four-thirty, which she has to get all the emails going to you. But very well-deserved and a person that we will really greatly miss. So, congratulations to Mary Ellen and the job very, very well-done. So, as was said before, and I will say it one more time, the beauty and the strength of public education is that it is local control, and the people who are sitting here on the board are representative of the community. All the people that we recognize tonight are from that community, and it is this strong, thriving community that makes such a difference here. So, I thank all of you for your involvement, for your suggestions, for your help, and for helping to push us to a level of excellence. It really is very, very special to be part of that. So, those are our recognitions for tonight, and I thank everyone.
Why don't we take a one-minute break? That way, you guys can take off if you so wish, and the rest of the audience that's here, feel free as well. Or you can stay for the business part of the meeting. You're always welcome. There will be a public comment section at the end, so if you want to stay for that as well. But otherwise, we'll take a one-minute break so you guys can get out of here. Thank you. All right. You guys ready? Okay. Okay, so we're back in session of the June nineteenth meeting, and I'm going to turn it back over to Dr. Moran.
Okay, we have two other recognitions tonight for seniors who have served our district in our capacity here with televising our broadcasts and the recording. So, I want to take a moment to thank Chris Brasha and Anthony Pereira. If you could stand, I know Anthony's on his way. Here he is. If you could please stand up, and we want to thank you for making these meetings available to our community and for being here for all these very, very long nights, working on board meetings and doing such a phenomenal job. We want to commend you, and we want to wish you well as you leave Eastchester High School. So, thank you so much.
Okay, and then I'm going to move on. Even though it's listed under superintendent's report, we need to approve. There's a slight amendment to the calendar. Dr. Moran can just address that, and then I'll ask for a motion and a second on it.
So, the change in the calendar, it's a very, very minor one, but on the previous calendar that we approved, the elementary parent-teacher conferences were listed as November twenty-ninth, which was a Thursday. It's now been moved to the Tuesday, November twenty-seventh. So, that's the only change in that calendar, but of course, it requires us to approve it one more time as an amendment.
Okay. Judah, can I get a motion?
Sure, I will move that. Should I continue moving on and other stuff, or just?
Uh, sure. You might as well do. You want to go through seven?
Yeah, I'll move the approval of the two thousand eighteen, nineteen, uh, school calendar is attached. I'll move for the Board of Education to approve the minutes of the May fifteenth, two thousand eighteen meeting. I'll move the recommendation superintendent schools for the personnel agenda is attached. I'll move the approval of placements as recommended by the Committee on Preschool Special Education and the Committee on Special Education. Should I stop there?
Yeah, that's fine. Dave, can I get a second over this?
I have a second.
All right. Any questions or any comments?
One, I think, it says we're moving May fifteenth minutes, but I think it's supposed to be June twelve.
June twelve.
The attachment is June twelve.
Yeah.
So, I think there's just a typo there.
Yeah, it's a typo on here, and it's actually... So, I will revise my motion to move the June twelfth minutes.
Okay. I got locked, knocked out, so... Just give me a sec. Any other questions or comments?
I just got a quick question on...
Sure.
It's actually on the calendar, and I know we approved it, but it's just, just a general question. When we have to take away the snow days, the first day that we're taking away is April twenty-second, which is the Monday after the spring vacation. And the second day we take away is the eighteenth, which is Thursday during the spring vacation. And I'm wondering if there's any reason why we couldn't take away the second day as the Friday, which is really a partial day before the spring vacation, rather than break up that week? Because if we have to go as far as the second, the second snow day, nobody's going to be around that week.
That partial day?
Yeah.
We already get credit for it. So, giving it back, taking it back, doesn't do anything.
What do you mean, we get credit for?
We already...
Because it's a half-day?
Because it's a partial day, under the new calendar rules. It counts as a day in session, so by...
Oh, because we don't go by the hours and...
Right. So, at this point, by doing that, we wouldn't actually gain a day back. It's already in our counts.
It's already counted.
Yeah. That was, we did, we did look at that.
Yeah. Because realistically, if you have to take the second day, you have to take the first day, very few people are going to come in, but the second day, nobody's going to be here. You know? Okay, that answers the question.
Hopefully, we won't get to that. It's actually, because the first day they take back will be May twenty-fourth, the Friday before...
Right. It's the third, it's actually the second and the third day.
But you're right.
We've been there.
Yeah, I know.
We've been there.
All right. Any other questions or comments?
The one thing I would make is, I just walk up to the fact that the graduation next year is on Wednesday rather than Friday, which, in my experience, is kind of the first time we've done that, and maybe we did it a long time ago.
I doubt it.
So, I would just suggest that we kind of publicize that early, because everybody's going to assume it's on Friday.
Could you say it again?
So, the graduation next year, because of the oddity of next year's calendar, it really is a very strange calendar, the way the days work out when the different holidays occur. We would not have had enough days of school to end on Friday, June twenty-first, but we would have had far too many days if we extended all the way to June twenty-eighth. So, the state cut it in the middle and said that the last official day next year is June twenty-sixth. So, graduation next year will be on Wednesday, June twenty-sixth, and rather than on Friday, the twenty-first or Friday, the twenty-eighth. We needed those extra days to reach the required number, but we didn't need all five of them. And so, but that's a state decision. They impose the last day, and so, it's immovable in terms. We can't go any later than that.
And that's also based on the BOSI's calendar, too, right?
Right.
Which is based on the state calendar.
So, but you're right. We will have to notify people early and say, "It's not like it used to be. This is actually a Wednesday."
I mean, I might even say it at like the high school open house, just to reinforce it, because people make a lot of plans around that early.
That's a good point.
Well, especially if we're doing it at night, you have work the next day. You're not having parties, obviously, that night.
Yeah, yeah.
So, it just, it definitely is a change.
Like you said, you have to include it in the opening letter to parents.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Certainly, certainly the senior parents.
Yeah.
Can I ask a second question or not?
Sure.
Are we doing it ten a.m. or are we doing it at six-thirty at night? Or we don't know yet?
I guess we'll see how tomorrow, how those are Friday.
Okay, TBD. Okay.
Don't want to answer that one yet.
That's okay. I'm making the entry in my calendar. That's why I'm asking.
All right. All in favor? All right. Sally?
Hi.
You want to do eight? Are you in?
I'm here.
Okay. You want to do eight?
Sure. Business office recommendations. Be resolved that the Board of Education hereby approves the following donation, thousand-dollar donation from the Women's Club of Eastchester for future scholarships. Oh, my favorite. Be resolved that the Board of Education approves the following tax surtiore settlements for the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen school year. And be it resolved that the Board of Education approves the payment of corresponding tax surtiore judgments for the reserve for the tax surtiore funds are available. Be resolved that the Board of Education hereby approves the following reserve fund increases. Be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby approves a payroll processing agreement with Michelle DeCarlo at the rate of a hundred dollars an hour and eight point five be resolved... Click on it. Be resolved that the Board of Education hereby approves the intermunicipal agreement with the town of Eastchester, Ville de Tocco, the village of Brocksville, and the Tocco University School District for street resurfacing and repairs with asphalt concrete.
All right, and Mary, can I get a second?
Second.
All right. Any questions, comments? Go ahead.
On the reserve...
You're not going to miss me.
On the reserve... Listen, there's an emoji for an eye roll, okay? Just send me the, just send me the emoji.
So, when you're watching, you can test the tape.
And when he says he has a question, we all look to you. Okay. On the reserve fund increases, I'm okay with that, but can we ask that we be notified when it's done, what those changes are?
Sure, as to the amounts, assuming there is.
So, you know, yeah, rather than find out about it when we look at the annual report from the audit, okay? And my second question was the payroll processing agreement. That's, that's a short-term agreement, and it's going to...
Yes.
End September, correct? That's only from...
Well, we hope it'll end when we have the person in place.
Okay, but it is a short-term solution. Okay.
All right. Any other questions?
Yeah, I had a question on the intermunicipal agreement. Is, it didn't show the allocation among the different, but there is a dollar amount attached to it. Is there some way that we at least roughly know the allocation at this point? I couldn't quite tell from it.
We buy what we want. There's, there's unit...
How do we know what the total dollar amount is?
There's unit pricing in there per ton of asphalt, if you look.
Yeah, it's basically unit...
It's like ten dollars a ton or something like that.
So, we're just, you're a soup and a circle?
So, we could buy none?
No, no, it's, it's all on what we buy, but we buy it at these prices, as I understand it.
But when they got to that total bid, biggers?
That's probably the town's number.
That's the overall.
Okay.
But it just basically, this, as I understand it, this always just locks us in at that rate for whatever we buy.
Some years, we haven't used it, I believe, and some years, we use a lot.
Right. But at least we get a...
A group price.
The benefit of an aggregate.
Right, exactly.
I think it's if you're going to do it, you go to this.
Yes.
As opposed to just really picking whoever you want.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other questions, comments? All right. All in favor? All right. And future meeting dates, I don't remember what the date is in July, but that's a private session. Well, I guess it's public because it's a reorg meeting.
The second, right?
July second.
Okay, July second.
It's the reorg meeting, and the board also has a meeting on June, on July ninth. That will be an executive session meeting. People are welcome to come, but we're going to dismiss them to executive very, very minute we open it, part of our annual board retreat.
Right. But July second is the next, the reorg meeting connection?
Yes, that is the next year.
Okay. All right, and comments from the public? Anybody? Sure, come on up.
Just a few comments. My name is Robert Cardolano. I'm here as president of the Eastchester Public Library Board of Trustees, and I want to just, as we end our school year on Friday, the twenty-second, make a note that, beginning on Monday, June twenty-fifth, begins the summer library reading program, which is called Libraries Rock. And Libraries Rock is a set of programs for the children and the teenagers in Eastchester and the community here. Summer programs start all throughout, all throughout the month of June, July, and August. There's registration that's available from June through August for the programs. There's a great list of programs and efforts and activities that are taking place that I think that the children would like. So, you can go to the eastchesterlibrary.org website or go to the Eastchester Library to learn more about it. My second comment is, as a parent, and I want to just recognize all of you, and Michelle especially, for all of your efforts, all of our teachers, all of the PTA, for all they do to support our children. And just as Michelle was talking about all the great programs, and Michelle, really, thank you for your efforts and all the board efforts. We've been here for sixteen years, and we've had a child in the district for every single one of those sixteen years. Our three children graduated this year from college, and they all tell us how well-prepared they were for college, thanks to the programs that were put in place. So, we're direct beneficiaries of the efforts to improve the educational programs in this district, and we want to thank you for that. We want to thank you also for your efforts to improve the programs, the activities that you have, whether it's AP or extracurricular activities, as well as the buildings and spaces. My oldest daughter didn't benefit from any of the renovations of the, of the buildings of the last twenty years, but my youngest two have benefited from all of them, from Waverly all the way up through to the high school renovations just occurred. So, it's great to see through the children, all these improvements to the program. And I think it's really terrific also, not only that we've had these improvements, but how welcoming all of the people in the community have been to folks who are, who have joined the community, and I know that the board has certainly done that for our family as well. So, Michelle, congratulations. Thank you very much on behalf of our family, and again, thanks for all of you for a great school year.
Good evening, everyone. My name is John Filiberty, Park Drive. I wanted to thank Steve. I got to know you a little bit on the technology committee. I appreciate your service. I've been on that side of the table, and I know how much work it is, so I appreciate all the efforts that you made as a Board of Education trustee. And I also wanted to take a moment, you know, I was just thinking about this. Twenty years ago, I was elected to the Board of Ed, and there was, there was Michelle. She was already a trustee. And I did three terms and parole. It's finally come through for you, Michelle. You know, I, I can't, you know, I, I think the people in Eastchester have been so fortunate to have so many great board members, but when, you know, one person, and I'm not going to get the, twenty-one years?
Yeah.
Twenty-one years, okay. You know, when, when a person puts in the amount of energy for the children, for the teachers, for the administrators, when I think of all of the great things that has happened in that amount of time, the expansions at the elementary schools, the expansion at Waverly, the expansion in the high school, the expansion in the middle school, when I think of all the times way back when, when we were starting to do some of those projects, and people, you know, some people in the community that were a little resistant kept saying, "Oh, you're building all this space. What are you building it for? You know, the student population is going to tap out." And, and you and the other board members at the time were very, very forceful in saying, "No, it's not. It's going to keep growing." And I think if you look at the population that you have now, you have around thirty-two hundred... And I think if you look at the population that you have now, you have around 3,200, I don't know the exact numbers, but you have around 3,200 kids, where 20 years ago we had maybe 1,000 or 1,100 less. So, it, you know, I can't say thank you enough to you. I'm a little jealous that you all have laptops, you know? You know, this, we didn't have laptops, you know, when I was on the Board. But, but, you know, I, I did want to say obviously, thank you to all the board members. There were some of you that I, I haven't had an opportunity to meet. Some of you I've known very well for a very long time and Michelle, 21 years, congratulations. The, the community really, really owes you a debt of gratitude for all of the decisions that you've had a hand in and I wish you the best.
Maura McMahon, 18 Parkway Circle. First, I'll be here as a parent and again, I just would like to echo everything that's been said tonight. Michelle, you have just been a hero to this district and having participated as a parent, as a PTA member, as a PTA president, school council, you know, community relations, whatever it is, you were there, you would help explain things, you, you made the district a large part of what it is and, and on behalf of my family, I would like to thank you. And I'd also like to reiterate, reiterate the thank yous to Mary Ellen Byrne, who's, I know she's not here tonight, but she helped the PTAs function to the best of their absolute ability. In a very rapidly changing communications environment, she helped guide us and helped, again, educate us and I think made us effective champions and advocates in the school district. And it was an experience that I relished and thank her for. And we will thank her personally, hopefully, later this week, but just wanted to put that on record. And again, and to thank all of you for everything that you do. I know that you guys are still at it and I left a few years, well, didn't really leave, I'm on the Alumni Association. However, I'm also here as a co-president of the Eastchester Beautification Association. I know I sent a letter, or we sent a letter last week because we found out at our annual meeting that the temporary, or some of the temporary parking outside of the middle school is going to become permanent parking. And as Eastchester Beautification, our, our goal is to make Eastchester the most beautiful place to live, work and play. And we have worked very hard with the town, with businesses, with residents to ensure that certain standards are met and that certain, you know, green spaces are kept. I understand the need for parking. Believe me, I, I remember these conversations going back many, many years. But I would just ask the Board to temper that with, green space is important too. And it's important for health, it's for, important for aesthetics and it's important to our property values. Eastchester has lots of cars and we can see it on the streets. I know that you've got more teachers and I just hope that absolutely every possible parking space spot was explored. I know, Dr. Moran, you, you got back to me and said, you know, that what was approved by State Ed was what was on the original plan. I did go back onto the website and do a little research. I even watched the video, Mary, that you did with Dr. Capuano and Dr. Moran. Parking was really never addressed and I looked at the picture that's on the website, the poster that was around, and it shows about 30 spaces in front of the middle school. And I believe what was approved was 45 spaces and two handicapped. And I also would think that what was drawn on that little, you know, I'm looking at a picture this big, it's going to extend far further into the green space in front of the middle school, which is really the green space that faces 22, our main avenue in town. And I would hope that perhaps you could reconsider and maybe not put all 45 in front of the middle school. If there's any way to minimize that further, that would be most appreciated. And at the very least, if that parking is going to go out there, that it is landscaped appropriately so that it is a beautiful space, as beautiful as a parking lot could possibly be. For instance, just EBF worked with the town when the library was redoing their parking lot after Town Center had been renovated and they were relocating their staging area. And we were able to come up with a design which allowed for more trees, it allowed for green space, it allowed for benches and a walkway, you know, from 22 to the library. And I know some of that is on the plan, but I didn't know if there was another plan that shows the 45 and how far along, you know, 22 it goes and how much of the green space will remain. I know there are a couple of people from EBF here with me tonight. We fear very strongly about this and I know it's at the 11th hour plus, you know, the last meeting and you guys want to get this done this summer, but we're able and willing to meet with you during the day or any time that might, you know, work. So, just putting a plug in for green space. Thank you.
Thank you.
Barbara Menon, 55 Lincoln Avenue. I'm going to add a little bit to Maura's comments and, you know, the issue with that piece of land is it's at the crest of a hill, so it's so visible and I don't know if in the plan, there's any grading down, berming to camouflage. Is, is there, can we see the plan? I didn't see the plan. Is there, are there drawings? The other thing that I see as problematic is right now, there's asphalt gravel on either side of that concrete sidewalk that the kids use to cut from the corner of Lincoln and 22 onto the grounds. And how is that going to be resolved? You're going to have kids walking through this parking lot, rushing to their classes, you know, rushing to get to their first class? Like, how, how does that work? It just seems to be like a problem. So, can we see the plans? Can we see drawings? Is there anything? Or, or it just doesn't?
There's a drawing. The Board has seen the drawing that we, that we've, that we've spoken about tonight. I don't see any reason why we can't share with you that drawing. It was, it was designed by the architects, it was approved. It includes 45 parking spaces and plus four handicapped, but there is a perimeter around the area by Route 22, there's a perimeter by Lincoln Avenue and there's a perimeter in front of the middle school library and classrooms that's currently all millings for parking that will be part of the landscaping. So, you know, my read of this, and I think the Board's read of this, is that the parking that we're looking at is in the center of that area and around that area will be, will be landscaped, grass and perhaps some trees and such. So, I, I think that it's, it's going to look very different. What we have now, what you've described now are the millings and the millings will be removed. This will be permanently paved and landscaped and then we'll have to reseal and put grass in and make a grass area.
But it's smaller than the area that is there now.
It's about half.
It is smaller.
It's, it's half of what's currently there.
And how are you going to resolve that sidewalk?
I'm not sure I know what sidewalk.
Well, there's a, there's a major sidewalk from the corner.
Sidewalk's outside the lot, I think. I think it's outside the lot.
And it, you know.
You can see it on that.
I'm sure.
There's a new sidewalk. There's a new sidewalk coming off 22 and it wraps around and it goes right around the parking, back to the front of the school.
And does it follow pretty much the, the diagonal path that the current one does?
It's a little bit more curved, but it does, you know, it follows the contour, but it goes around the parking area, so it's not connected to it.
So, there's not parking on the, on both sides of that sidewalk?
No, just on the one side.
I, I think that, you know, a big concern also is, and I'm sure you've heard that the Audi dealer across the street is planning on expanding their parking into that piece of property that just sits there with just grass and no landscaping and everything. So, you know, our concern is that it, we're going to have Central Avenue, you know, right on Route 22 and it's a major intersection for our town and we want it to look beautiful. So, we, we don't want these two competing slabs of asphalt on either side of that major corner. So, and Michelle, thank you very much for your service.
All right. I'm going to close the comments from the public section and go to comments from the Board. Any comments? Board members?
Sure. I just wanted to say thank you to the Board, to the administration and to the community for letting me give back to the community and serve for these past few years. It has been an honor and a pleasure. So, thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Well, I would be remiss without saying a few words to Michelle, so if I can blow this up so I can read it, because I left my notes at home. First off, I want to thank Michelle for all she has done for the children of Eastchester over the past 21 years and for the future Eastchester children who will benefit as a result of all of her dedicated hard work. Michelle has spent as much time on the Board as many of our retiring teachers have spent in the district. As you hear, Mary Ellen spent 14 years, she outlasted her. Michelle has worked tirelessly behind the scenes to make sure that Eastchester schools have continuously sought to improve and they have improved dramatically under her trusted watch. Whether it be increasing the rigor and variety of our curriculum or increasing the diversity of our staff, she has never forgotten that it is all about the best interests of our children. She has personally, personally cemented a cooperative, respectful relationship between the Board and the ETA and all of our other constituent groups. Her dedication is shown not only by how long she has served, long after her children have graduated from the schools, but by her continuing commitment. She can see the bigger picture and can always be a voice of reason with a sound solution. I am grateful to have had the opportunity to serve with her. I know she has made me a better person and trustee just by being associated with her. You will truly be missed, but have certainly earned the right to take on different endeavors. Your grandchild was here today. I am forever grateful for your service and all of Eastchester owes you a great debt for the time you have spent on all of our beheads. Thank you. It is a debt we can never repay. Thank you. I also would like to thank our administration, all of our teachers, all of our staff for the hard work that they did all year and for making this a successful year and I look forward to many more. Thank you all and enjoy the summer. Anybody else? All right.
Yeah, I just want to say, so, um, I'm, I'm, this was beautiful and I really can't add to it, but Michelle, we're going to miss you terribly. And I also do want to recognize Mary Ellen Byrne because she has just been such a mainstay for all of the volunteer organizations, for the Board and for the district. She will be greatly missed. I don't know, it's going to be tough in September without the two of you. Thank you.
And can I get a motion to adjourn because we do not have executive sessions.
Oh.
All right. Vito and Steve? All right. All in favor? All right. Thank you, everybody, and have a good night and a good summer.